We may just stop.
I say, I say, have a long chat.
Welcome to the meeting of the Ramsgate Planning and Infrastructure. So, welcome to, all the members are here, the guests who are here and anybody on the line. Please, can you make sure your phones are on?
What's that, I don't know.
The first item on the agenda is to receive any apologies. And I don't think, no apologies. No apologies, that's key. And any declarations of interest from the members of the council?
They're all interested.
I've said it just the fact that we're regular patrons of the San Clu Hotel haven't. We have to declare that.
Right, and to approve the minutes of the last meeting held on the 10th of July. Is the proposal, that's councillor Nixie, the second, councillor Austin. Right, now, oh, sorry, all those in favour, I always forget that bit. And we now would like to make a change to the order of the minutes to accommodate our visitors so they don't have to sit.
They'd like to.
Oh, it's my.
Yeah, let's make them, yeah. I need to suffer.
So, if we vote, we will consider the planning applications before the neighbourhood plan. Can this?
Yes, I was.
Second, councillor. Right, all in favour. So, the planning applications, again, can we take them out of order? And would?
Want to?
The San Clu first, please, I propose that.
Yes, seconded.
All those in favour? Yeah? Right, so, this is Buster Extension. And I called it in.
You want to sit?
And we have one of the tag.
Because you're in, you're in the really cheap seats.
Just move the chair.
They are all female and they are watching the back of their heads.
That is true, obviously. So, as it says, member, it's the erection of a five-storey extension opening up of existing basement to provide ten self-contained residential units and nine apart hotels, spa, coffee shop, function room and conference facilities, following the creation of a new entrance and demolition of an existing extension and outbuilding. You are considering the listed building consent for the same thing. Thank you.
Could I, first of all, we have representatives here of the owners and the planners. And can we vote on whether they're allowed to answer questions? It's the only thing, they're not going to propose me to make a presentation. But if we have any questions, can we vote? All those in, I propose them.
I just think to make comment on that, Chair. There isn't anybody here to speak against. And that's the difficulty. Not saying what they're going to do or what they would say or what they would answer is not correct. But someone, if they were against that, then they might would. What I would suggest is that if members have a question and want to ask question of the representative, then that's a different matter.
Although, that's what I'm proposing.
Yeah, okay, so we got there in a roundabout later, but thank you.
Yeah.
All those in favour?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. So, I called it in because obviously it's a, it's a big development in a quite strategic area. A very big development. And there are loads and loads and loads of objections to it, which are mainly focused around parking, not completely.
Mainly focused about what, Chair?
Parking.
Parking.
Parking. I have, it's because if they're providing a whole load of new units, there will be a whole load of new cars. And residents feel aggrieved by the Granville Theatre across the road, which at certain times, obviously not all the time, makes it difficult for them to park. And there is a particular lady, who several people have mentioned, who needed an ambulance and they couldn't get to her house and stuff. Have we got any comments on this? Councillor Wynn.
Doesn't he talk us through it first?
Right.
So, as you can see from the pictures, this is what it will look like and the gap that it's filling. So, that's the location plan. Sorry, that's rather faint, that's system. So, it's not as easy to operate this because it's not on the usual PowerPoint. So, I might flick a bit too fast on you, sorry.
Don't worry. That's what we're looking at.
Well, Chair, if I may, is there parking proposed on site?
I believe there are six extra parking spaces proposed.
So, there is some?
There's already some at the back. But they're proposing six extra. I think at the back where that grey patch is, that's.
I'm counting, sorry, one, two, three, I've got my long glass.
Yeah, I've got one.
Somebody counted.
Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, possibly fifteen. It's not existing. And they do seem to be a mixture of apartments.
Yeah.
And facilities such as cafe, bench, convention room. Where's it gone? We could ask the ladies to clarify. Yeah, just for some time to avoid that. Ten self-contained residential units, nine apart hotels, spa, coffee shop, function room, conference facilities, following the creation of a new entrance, demolition of the existing extension and outbuilding. I think particularly the conference facilities are allowing people, councillor Orban.
Yeah, if I'm going to go straight and say that I think something like this is something that Ramsgate needs. Right? Conference, we've got nowhere for that. The hotel has been, as we all know, been there as well, it's been done up lovely. The design fits smashing in with the rest of the building. The issue for me is whether or not, and we've had babes coming from residents to myself and whatever, and to Karina and Helen, from a residence in Albert. And their concern, well, one of the concerns was loss of view. Well, that's not, that's not a planning issue, that's not taken into account. The other, the main thing, I think, for them is the mass of the structure that would affect, that would affect us as an overpowering, this, obviously there was, not mine, an overpowering building. Now, whether there's loss of light from that building or not, I don't know. I don't know that, and that's something I will look at at TDC planning. But on balance, when you take it into the extension of the hotel, what it's going to provide and what it will do for Ramsgate, I think my balance is in favour of the application. So, that's just.
Councillor Austin.
I have looked at it also.
I would agree on balance with councillor Orban. We need to remember that the facade as it's looking now is much more like the facade as it originally was, that the area, that area that they're building on is where there was the rest of the hotel before there was a fire, however many years ago, that destroyed that. So, we're looking at putting something back, okay, it's a more modernised version and whatever, but we're looking at putting something back. And in terms of facade, the crucial location, as you've said, on the seafront there, et cetera, where we, you know, we don't have very much that's imposing, that really is, and it will provide fantastic. I do think we need to look at the design of it in terms of light for neighbours and there might be some adjustments that are needed, but in general, on balance.
I was just going to. Question of the planning consultant. Have you been in the discussions with the planners at TDC yet?
We have, we got the application advice last year. And the planning officer did suggest that we should do the advice on our test, which you've done.
Which we've done.
If you want to make some eyes for results, we can turn it through that.
No, I don't think so. That's because we're, I mean, I'm sort of. The only ones I can see that affected are the gable wall of behind and their back extension, which will be in the dark. Sorry, councillor Shonk, you wanted to?
Yes, it's a urgency roundtable. I just, is that going to work with conjunction with an existing business? And the new build will it blend in with the old build, which I believe it's going to?
It looks good, it does, yeah.
That's why I have to see that. That part has always been a non-look, although people do like sitting outside and having a beer. So, I hope if that was built and it got the go-ahead, that concrete slab along the front, which to me, I know it looks untidy, could be a nice little area to sit outside. If on the, where, just where the pavement is along urgency Ramsgate, or it's good for business. We do use the place quite a lot, don't we?
Yeah.
Councillor Wynn. I, first of all, would like to say, I'm sitting on planning, but you can't opt to take this in isolation so you can't include any issues that might have risen from the Ramville and parking. And firstly, going around state, there are issues with parking. So, you know, we would be building anything because wherever you go, there's an issue with parking and hopefully the parking strategy will address that. And there may be something that the owners could do to try and reduce the use of cars. So, maybe the owners could introduce a collective restoration service and we try to encourage people not to use, not to bring their car because it's such a pain when you've got a car and you're here and you can walk and get on the bus anywhere you go. The other thing, the other thing that was brought up, brought to my attention was, we actually have a fair number of swifts swallowed. Swifts on our side, but there's also a fair few on that side. And I know two of the local experts that are, you know, heavily understanding, got more about swifts than I would ever understand, were really concerned about this building affecting the possible flight area of it. But instead of saying we don't want it built up because there's some swifts about, they wanted, they wanted us to, or they wanted to appeal to the developers to try and put some additional swift boxes up.
Swift boxes on the end again.
So, that's the best. We're actually doing is increasing the habitat for swifts. And we also lose a green area. So, is there any way that greenness can be incorporated somewhere in the development? I don't know. Councillor Austin, I was just going to ask, it's that these are, I think we've already. Haven't we? Would you like if they can just move to the end of the new?
Yeah, we have constructed an ecology, we work with an ecology. They've carried out already a pretty good ecology appreciation, which looks at protected species, which wouldn't be contested birds. We can expand that first to swifts, that's what they is.
So, really, yeah, to get them all there.
So, would you be prepared to allow the two local experts to have a chat with you?
And might I just add that the loss of the existing entrance and the loss of the existing conference facilities would be a big advantage to the appearance of the building. Yes, I don't know how we ended up with them.
I would just say about the part about sort of shuttles of the station. It's ten self-contained residential units and nine apart hotels. So, it won't be so much coming and going, I wouldn't have thought.
Is it within the sustainable areas? I don't know where the line goes when we talk about the town centre, there's a sustainable line. I'm not quite sure how far it goes out of that area.
Quite a way out, yeah.
But again, I mean, anybody coming into this area would come on the train, would bring the car.
That's it.
Are we busy?
Yes, councillor Shonk, please. So.
That's right, I mean, I'm looking at the Granville Hotel, because we've done the same there. Weather was the same height, but it did blend in because that was a bit of a nice, right? I think it was bombed down. It's worth looking at these places.
Councillor Nixie, is that a hand?
It is, yeah, thank you. I mean, again, it's, you know, harking back to the buildings there originally and it's very difficult when you've got used to something not being there. So, I mean, I get the idea of like putting it back. And in terms of design-wise, I agree, it looks outstanding. In terms of facilities, why wouldn't we want that in Ramsgate? It's absolutely amazing. I think going to councillor Wynn's point with regards, I mean, everything that we look at as the council with regards to planning, we are looking about trees and, you know, greenery and anything because it's quite, I mean, it's, I know it's the, it's the front and then the winter, that gets an absolute pounding, I get all of that. But it would be, I would be keen to see what could be done with regards to landscaping and softening that up a bit. I know that councillor Shonk, for example, said that slab at the front, about making it a seating area, whether they propose to do that, I don't know. But definitely adding, adding some greenery to it as sustainable as possible would definitely be in keeping with what we as a council would be after.
Councillor Orban.
I think if that isn't a possibility, looking at, looking at that, you're unlikely to get any big advantage out of that piece once it's developed. But I think as part of the, part of the application, maybe as part of a section 106 agreement, that it could be that money is placed elsewhere.
Well, across the road.
Yeah.
Within Ramsgate, wherever it's opposite.
Yeah.
So, I'm sure.
No, like sponsorship of the borders, the beds and borders opposite or something like that.
So, we don't remember that, yeah.
If that was going to be placed or.
There are very valid points of, I think, there are a few issues. One is the visual impact of the soft greenery and then the ability to provide this. So, we are fully aware of the mandatory requirement of 50% net gain improvement above this. Then we're ready. Obviously, can't provide that on site. We have been working with the ecologists to see what can be moved on the site. But we know that we're going to have to make a site contribution to a recent site, which hopefully will be in the public.
Oh, what's that again, you asked for that?
Yeah. Exactly, yeah. And in terms of Ramsgate Town Council and our aim to be, you know, carbon neutral and the climate change, climate task force, the rest of it, we're doing everything we can to try and get as much, you know, trees, biodiversity, native plants and so on and so forth. It's, you know, it can never be too much at the moment. So, although it's only the grass at the moment, I mean, even taking that out means that Ramsgate loses it. Forget the rest of the planet, we're not interested in them. We want, we want the green, because, you know, if you're concrete over Ramsgate, then you bring the green back to Ramsgate, which we're very focused on that, to be honest with you.
Councillor Wynn. That, I mean, that might not be a decision that these, that these guys have got control over. So, I suggest it's up to one of us to submit a question to full council to ask what happens to the offsetting money and can it save the living?
Yes, we can put that in our comments.
Yeah, but we need to obviously pay the side. But we're obviously, when it comes to that, when it comes to the planning application at Sannick District Council, then that may well be a condition on the, on.
With the system.
Should it come for approval? That may well be a condition.
I should ask, sorry, councillor Heaven.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a lovely building. It's very stylish, very much in keeping, there is the parking issue. I'm just a little bit curious, what do you actually aim to say? I'm looking at the size of the conference facilities. I mean, what number of people do you, how many people do you imagine having that? What would be the maximum? But the conference, the size of the rooms, how many people do you envisage that that would come?
We should be able to increase our number of people.
That's what I think, it's about that size of room, yeah.
We can't be seven, we haven't got organisation to use, we're going to have to reschedule. And they're going to need to move on their numbers, so it's.
That's good. And where are you exactly, I mean, what are you, you've got flats here, you've got the conference facilities, you've got spa facilities, I mean, what kind of, when you're thinking, how, what are you thinking of marketing this?
How is it going to be?
I mean, are these going to be rented flats?
Yeah, oh, yes, so. It should be, yeah. So, it's a combination of quality, it's, you know, people from home, it's common sense in time. Doing Ramsgate, we did this to. In terms of the conference facilities, most of all, I was looking for a bench for my wife. And I wish I had it, and if we can, we can walk my wedding relationship. So, hopefully we'll be able to attract senior things.
Yeah, by the way. It's a lovely fact sent up the road.
It's more unusual than I thought, but I think there's people that have large families that want to stay in the top group. Our top group, so it's.
Yeah.
So, this is about for large families to come together and vacation in Ramsgate, which I can't be more than to do with myself. It is just your question. So, I, um, the question about transport, it's not really quite packed. So, people, like, people, the rest of it's actually, how, so, like, to the same places. Also, considering we're using, so, you could come and play, but there's a pain, quite a bit of opportunity for them to play their back. And it's like secure, so there is certainly things that are actually part of, and they're actually.
Well, I have to say this certainly because the difficulty we have trying to find registered school conferences, I think it's definitely a market for this because I've had endless problems in the past trying to find something of this ilk. So, it's good news.
The challenge we have, it's given me to try to contribute to it. If you have a small, it's all, and it's, it's, and it's, and it's, and it's. And it's a, a conversation about the apart hotels.
Sites and and also asking that the planning officers do all that they can to ensure a a less of an impact on neighbours behind in Albert Road.
Passes without us, yep. Well, during construction you mean?
No, 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 during the processing of the application.
I'll second that.
We've got a second to all those in favour of that motion?
Okay.
And that, I'll just ask if that does include the listed building applications?
Yes, that will be your comment. Thank you very much. Nice to meet you. Yes, Carston Avenue. They've done such a good job on the ramp. Yes, please. It's the mics on.
Yes, please.
Um, that's Austin. Yes, just wanted to have a look at this because there's been so much development, so many proposals recently in Carston Avenue. We just wanted to have a look and make sure that we were happy that it wasn't going to cause adverse impacts on neighbours.
So anyone viewing the application is ten Carston Avenue, erection of a single storey rear extension. With living green roof and roof lantern, together with erection of dormer to side of roof and and insertion of skylights to front and rear facilitating conversion of loft, thank you. So there's your location.
Well, we objected to this before?
No.
No.
It's a we've had a number of others of the same road, some of which we have. They were big applications.
Yeah.
It just says.
This one is much more modest, I think. Yep.
Yeah, it just said Rousegate Town Council rejects this application.
So that's your existing.
I'm listening.
How interesting.
And they withdrew it.
Yep.
So this is this, it takes longer to load this, um, that's your existing.
Yep.
And you proposed, unfortunately I can't flick fast through them.
They've obviously expanded the ground floor and they've put a roof in the roof, which involves dormers. It doesn't particularly encroach on neighbours. Councillor. Yep. Um, we've got a proposal for no comment. And a second, all those in favour? Yeah, okay, that one's gone through. Next one, Flambow. You were at last. Why is it opening? Can somebody tell me where they're going? Are they closing or they're moving? They're supposed, they're supposed to be moving.
They're moving actually.
They.
Assume they were.
They, they are very, very iffy about providing any affordable housing. Because if they do, they won't be able to get the money up the site.
Yes.
Go wherever they want.
I think it was contamination, people started contaminating the pockets. I think that's what I can remember from.
Councillor Shaw.
I think this come up a good six years ago when Peter Campbell was here.
Hmm.
Uh, if you're a local and you know that ever on that road, there's a side is where the train would go and that for the bus. What worries me is the overload of business and housing in the area and around Manson. You see the green and the ivy, all that habitat loss. Have you, you know, is Becky on that bridge?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
It's just overload. I mean, why are we enticing a business away from where they are because they're going to get that? It's a huge area, it's a huge area to look at. And it's going to be cleared completely and it'll be whole rows and rows of.
Um, anyone else to do?
It is a brownfield site, it's not farmland, uh, but I do have concerns about, you know, we're looking again at net biodiversity gain and I do have concerns about them trying to riddle out of the social housing numbers, which I think is not, not acceptable.
Hmm, can we just say? Couldn't we say we could look, look at planning if we've got some affordable housing, central housing? Can we, can we impose it on?
You are only looking at.
An outline.
Hmm.
But not.
Outline and it's an amendment, they've updated the proposed site plan, removed section letters and supporting documents regarding road safety. So this, that is what they have asked us to look at.
And also, and they have an expired planning permission from two thousand seventeen, I think, for a similar scheme, which they refer to quite a lot as this haven't justed application, no. For some whatever reason, it hasn't happened. Yes.
Yeah, I think, um, as far as the outline application is concerned, we've already made comment on that.
Yeah.
We've already saying about, uh, we want planning game by a one on six agreement to improve the war wreck. Uh, and we've already said there were concerns about the amount of increased traffic movement on Manson Road and the effect on surrounding roads.
They've moved the entrance.
Yeah, so what I'm saying, so we're, so we've already mentioned that. So maybe as part of that, they've now come in, but then obviously the planning officers have said they've got concerns, obviously, because they've come in with this amendment. Outline application, um, so they've obviously, uh, updated the site plan. Uh, I don't know, obviously I haven't seen that site plan, if we can see that site plan. So whether that's to ensure that there's a better access onto Manson Road.
They, they, that's what they claim. And.
Right.
There's also, they provide no play space for children, I suppose, um, which they mentioned.
Only children are allowed to play up there.
Obviously, I don't think that works.
They seem to think that the scheme would not be viable if they did take away a house or write a playground.
Well, the thing is, at the end of the day, they're either going to move or they're not going to move. If they, if they move and don't do anything with that land, it's there, they're a rock. But they need that, that land developed so they can continue and to expand and that means jobs.
Yeah.
So I think that, that's an important thing, but however, whether there are too many houses on, uh, looking to put in onto, onto that land, but we didn't make comment about that. Bearing in mind it's an outline application. So I think when it comes to the full application.
I think that's why we didn't though.
Then, then we can make, we can make sufficient comment on that. So personally speaking, I don't have a problem with, 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 with the amendment.
Uh, councillor. I do feel that there's not room for them to expand where they are. It's a massive place, underused. I mean, if they expand, they're still going to kill all that habitat all along the whole bridge on that road. It looks over the bay at Pegel. So I should be up against it anyway. It's up to other people, but at the moment I just think there's just overload at Tesco's Manson.
They, well, they do claim that they would need to re-ferish the existing because it's not very.
This is just a Floyd plan.
Well, maybe.
Uh, I, I. Two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty-four. No, it's expired, so it's going to be a new one, isn't it?
Yeah.
They need the money to expand somewhere.
Yes, and as councillor Orban says, it is jobs.
Uh.
They are keen to emphasise in their job.
It can't be a plan, I thought, sorry, it can't be a planning consideration, we have to look at the application.
Yeah.
On it, so we can't be concerned that we're going to expand down the road and they need to sell so many houses. I thought it was about the contamination on site that was making the site quite expensive. But, uh, and Steve's right, we, we, we're only commenting on that, so.
Yeah.
It, it really will need to be called into TDC where it can be scrutinised further.
And so they're.
Personally, I've got a problem with.
No, I'm not.
With.
Councillor. Well, I've got a proposal in that case, I mean, we're only looking at that one aspect.
That one aspect, yeah.
I do feel that our previous comment where it says there are concerns about the amount of increased traffic movement onto Manson Road and the effect on the surrounding areas. I think I propose our original comments regardless of this, because that hasn't affected any of that. So you can move it as much as you like.
It's just to expand, so why aren't we?
It's kills that.
With that one?
Yes.
We are, because that, that, that objection.
No, no, that, that's a rhetorical question, what I mean is like, that's our, that's our.
That objection has gone through, it's still there.
Yeah.
Well, it's no different place, but they do point out at the moment, they have a lot of big lorries moving in and out of that side.
They do have a lot of big lorries, I think we have gone down that road all the time, they do not have a lot of big lorries, don't you mean, but, but. So, so my proposal is, you know, regardless of the amendments, we still have concerns about the amount of increased traffic movement onto Manson Road and the effect on the side of the road.
Yeah.
There were no objections.
Right.
Still want planning.
No objection.
And we still want the planning game.
Yes. Yes, it is.
Okay, so do we have a proposal?
Can I just clarify that?
Yeah.
So basically what we're saying is regardless of the amendments that we are looking at, we repeat.
Yes.
That, yeah.
Be that in the outline document.
Yes, and it's also in the local plan, it's designated for housing. So, you know, they'll get it in the way.
Yeah, it's not that aspect of it, you know, we're obviously not worried about now because that's not what we're looking at, but even like further down the line. Like you said, we didn't comment on the amount, did we, because it was just an outline plan and we can deal with that when it arrives, but this, yeah, stands, doesn't it? Anyway, I've proposed something.
I'll check in.
All those in favour of that proposal?
Thanks.
Thanks.
And one, councillor Shaw. I think councillor Shaw, that because it's in the local plan for housing.
So I've, I've had my say on what I've, I mean, unless you're going to have a look at that big site, which is a big site.
Yes, okay. Um, now the next one. Here.
There it is.
Two, three. It's the other side of the Tesco.
Yes.
It's very, very.
Is that with it, is that with it?
Yeah.
Where the mental health service is.
In front of it, yes.
Yeah, get Big Mac, Happy Meal, get Horrible Meals, we've got the other for both towns.
So anyone that gets any service there would be pretty happy these days, happy to have services.
I don't know, I should have.
Yes, I'll pick anyone who.
One meeting adjacent to Tesco Superstore Manson Road, erection of one drive-through restaurant together with landscaping, associated access and parking following alterations to existing car parking area. Called in by councillor Austin, thank you.
Yes. Councillor Austin, um, where to start really? Um. Probably most of my concerns are not planning considerations, they're about, you know, the health of children. They're about the state of litter that's already all the way down those hedges, et cetera, et cetera, from Tesco's before we start with the McDonald's litter. Um, none of those planning considerations, but I do think there were concerns about traffic, the highway, we've, we've already got a huge amount of building happening for top of that road. This is going to complicate things further having a drive-through, et cetera. Um, I don't think it's going to enhance the area at all.
Well, it's through the, through the Tesco car. I will say about litter.
Yeah, I mean, these will get passed, I know, but it's.
McDonald's are very good about litter outside their place, unlike K S or Subway or whatever. They are, they do have a policy.
Yeah, clear enough, clear outside. Yeah, obviously Tesco do not. Tesco don't do anything all day long, though we ask them every year to do it during the spring cleaning and they don't.
And councillor.
Chair, I think what we've got to do is we've got to put your prejudices to one side.
Oh, please, no.
Yes, you've got to put your prejudices to one side, whether or not you like McDonald's or what. If parents are willing for their kids to go and have it, it's their decision, it's not ours to ensure that the, the, the kids don't eat Mc- McDonald's. Um, wish it was, but it's not. Um, we've got to concentrate on whether, one, is it required? Because there are a thousand other McDonald's in Westwood area and wherever they are. Is it a necessity for it to be there? Will the design of the building be, that we, we know what it's going to look like because they're all the same? So is it, is that a McDonald's there going to have a visual effect? Only in relation to the big, um, illuminated sign? Um, increasing traffic?
Hmm.
Probably.
Yeah.
But will it be substantial in comparison to what councillor Shaw said about already, you know, when we've got Westwood now and everything, the developments there, further houses, so there are loads of traffic anyway. Um, so I think those are the type of things you, you've, you've got to take into cons- into consideration. Nothing else.
There is one objection from somebody who says they don't want to look out at a McDonald's. If I could find a house that that would apply to, but yes.
So if you're on the new, yes, new stretch opposite the entrance to Tesco's, yes.
Um.
Councillor.
I was just thinking about what councillor Orban said, I mean, we'll reference to that, there isn't McDonald's quite close by at Westwood Cross, I mean, how many McDonald's drive-throughs do we need? You know, and this is a drive-through, so you could drive through Westwood Cross just as easy as you could drive through Manson.
Okay, councillor.
I mean, McDonald's, you know, McDonald's moved out of Ramstake, had a successful business in Ramstake thirty years and all you're doing is taking, we all to amend cars and traffic, all this means is everybody jumping cars and traffic, buses are not going to go to McDonald's. I mean, they left Ramstake, had a one opposition and they're all enticed to go to Westwood Cross. Now they're all trying to come back into the town here, but I'd be running against it. And I've got nothing against them, I probably have McDonald's once a year.
Uh, I, I, I think Jane's point, there is evidence of need, there is, there is no evidence of need because they're quite close. I, I wouldn't imagine it's less than a mile. And the other thing that I think we need to raise concerns over is the net biodiversity gain, the loss of, there doesn't exist any net biodiversity gain on site. Uh, it's just all gone.
Hmm.
It doesn't purchase any landscaping.
No.
Maybe that small bit, whatever, because none of them have got it.
There's a planter, so biodiversity loss.
Uh-huh. Councillor Austin.
Landscaping. The area where, where they're looking at, there's quite all just a scrub land, it's very unattractive, but it's probably absolutely teeming with insect life and also stuff like that. So there will be considerable loss that we need to point out and, and that they need to make provision for.
There is a note here, there is a biodiversity.
Habitat reduction sixty-five percent. My colleague has put on there for.
There you, there you go, and I think, I think that's the reason for refusal.
So they've got a quote seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
Councillor.
I mean, I think, I was looking at that site yesterday as I went up to Tesco's and, um, looked over and see it and they've started, you know, clearing away that you can have a look through and what have you. Um, and for the biodiversity habitat reduction alone, I would want to object to this. Um, and it would definitely be part of a proposal if I was going to make one. I think the thing with me is, I mean, I'm not saying the site shouldn't be used for something, and obviously I don't know everyone's land, but I mean, you know, if it had been like the mental health services or something like that, I know we can't choose what goes on there. I think I wouldn't be so against it. It's not McDonald's necessarily, but it's this element of, it's something that takes business away from the town, it's drive-through, it's no benefit really to anybody other than that business. Whereas I don't see it as being a benefit to Ramstake all the residents or anything around it, just that business. And so on that basis, I wouldn't be happy that it was there either. But my main concern is, is the loss of habitat.
Councillor Austin.
Yeah, I see, uh, hang on.
Can we also, I, I, again, I don't think this is a planning consideration, but I mean, we've got a, a climate emergency declaration. We've got, you know, we are encouraging doing this, we are encouraging people to drive to somewhere where actually we already have a drive.
That's what I was saying.
We already have other.
There's no gain.
It's not, it's, it's contrary, we're doing something with one hand that's contrary to what we're doing with the other hand.
Councillor.
It's, it's great to have a, a part of a land that just to make it look direct. Because that's what it's made to look like, so if people come along and say, whoever, TDC, oh, get someone built on it. It wouldn't take much to tidy it up and put it, I mean, we lost so much land on the other side of that school, they sold all that land off. Why not make a nice green area for the kids to play? It isn't just about Manson Tesco, it isn't about all these other cheap outlets of student, it's about where there was a green belt, I mean, there isn't two months up in Newington and they do, they.
We don't have green belt here.
Well, why not?
Well, because you're not a major city.
Councillor Orban.
Do I just clarify something that councillor Shaw just said? TDC don't ask anybody to build anything anywhere.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's just there you come, someone comes along and decides, oh, that, this looks like a right site, I'll, I'll develop that. I think the issue about vehicles, you've got to be careful, don't forget, you've got Tesco's there, people come and drive in there all of the time, including me.
And the petrol station.
And, and, and you've got a car wash there or whatever it is there. So people using Tesco's will use McDonald's. Doesn't necessarily mean people are going to come across the other side of, of Thanet and go into that drive-through. But I'm just saying, I'm just making that, making that point. Personally, my own view is, as I've said, I think the loss of biodiversity there, sixty-five percent is, is a hell of a lot. And, and, and I just think that's, that's something that, that is, that we can be spot on with. That we could say that is what we don't like. I propose that, Chair, that we go, we, we, we.
We object.
We object to it on the grounds of the loss of biodiversity.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favour? Um. Okay, the next one is nine hundred dollars, the big one.
Now, this is land on south side of Manson Court Road and west side of Hayne Road. It's outline application for reserve matters. Certainly I need to read all of that for you. Um, but the notice, this is for reserve matters regarding four hundred and forty-nine dwellings, including access, appearance, landscaping, layout and scale, so it's an amendment. Um, councillor Green, you called this one in for the committee to think about.
Yeah, I know, just to be sure that we're asking everything that we can ask in terms of, um, social housing and environmental gain.
Very much so.
Yes, councillor.
I think, I think councillor Green's right, you know, obviously a development of this size, um, and it's, it's a mixed development with retail, financial, professional services, restaurants, cafe, um, hotel, non-residential institution, assembly and leisure, um, and, and to, to form entry for a pri- for a primary school, so it's a very large development. Um, plus the, uh, plus the rest, um, you know, access for four hundred and forty-nine dwellings. So, you know, we're talking four and a half hundred houses here, so, um, I, I do.
So, no, so how many dwellings is this? Nine hundred, do you hear?
Yes, come up nine.
Yeah, but it, it just refers to, yeah, the development up to nine hundred, but I think this one is the whole development site is for nine hundred houses, but it's just for four hundred and forty-nine. So I agree with councillor Green that we should, any comment that we do make must insist that we have thirty percent affordable housing events.
And the appropriate net biodiversity gain.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the infrastructure. Put it first, at least as a sentence, I would not be.
Yeah.
Uh, councillor Shaw.
Um, same with them, I think, it's, it's overload, no infrastructure, no doctors, no dentists. Water table's getting less and less and we keep building more and more.
Because it's in the local plan.
Well.
At TDC.
Someone's going to wake up to what's happening in Thanet, I do.
Well, the Tory government says set out a plan.
I'll argue my case, you know, that got me.
Yeah.
Well, it was passed by TDC, which I suspect you remember.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, what are the, the financial and professional services?
Could be anything.
That they're providing.
Could be anything from there. I think that what's.
So it could be a G P.
Yeah, so Chair, if, if I may, just to say that, that that, um, uh, class A two covers financial and professional services, so that could be, as, as councillor Green says, anything from, uh, doctors to lawyers to whatever, bank, anything of that nature, although they're both in banks, they're right centre, but, you know.
Could be post office.
Yeah, post office.
McDonald's.
Another McDonald's.
There is, well, there's a difference there.
Apparently our school with primary students were under subscribed.
What could take away could be, um, any could.
Okay, so do we have a proposal that we have?
Well, I, I think I, I would propose, Chair, that, that, that Rousegate Town Council has concerns in relation to the amount of affordable housing and, uh.
Net biodiversity.
No.
And, no, and net biodiversity gain, and Rousegate Town Council, uh, wants
maximum both.
Thirty percent affordable housing.
And we want this some infrastructure built.
Uh, yeah, by the way, is that put that in, and infrastructure to be built before, prior to the building of the houses.
Or prior to the occupation.
Right to.
Building.
Right to, prior to the construction.
Right, okay, well, I will second that. All those in favour?
Hang on.
So that's that one.
Oh, is that that done, that bit?
It was.
Back then.
That's true.
Yes, we look to go back to the neighbourhood plan.
Let's turn it down.
Has anyone got any comment?
Yes.
Yes.
I have, Chair.
Councillor.
My comments are, it's my view that, uh, we thank our people for, uh, who's carried out the, the, come up with the document for the Rousegate Neighbourhood Plan. And that we submitted to Thanet District Council for, uh, consultation.
We not have to go for consultation first to the public?
No, not because it's, you can't consult on something that TDC aren't going to agree on.
Councillor.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, the recommendation is to approve this version of an open plan for screening by TDC, which is what you've covered.
Yeah.
And also to start, uh, regulation fourteen consultation, once TDC have completed the screening process, is that what you're?
That's exactly what that says.
We can't consult on something that TDC are going to say, no, you can't do that.
At least we'll send it out to an expert.
I'll say, I don't like this for a good drawing, so they've put them here.
Oh, that's, can't like everything, you know.
It's not too bad.
I'll say.
Unless it's so.
All those in favour? Perhaps, that's all in favour, right. And the second term of the next meeting, sorry.
Just have to go to full council.
No, I don't think that's a question.
I thought it does have to come to full council.
I don't think so, is everybody the chance to comment?
I think it's mentioned at some point, I can remember somebody else's coming.
Well, could we ask, could we ask, Chair, could we ask Eileen to?
I'll find out.
I'm sure the broadstairs, I'm sure I can remember the broadstairs one being at a full council meeting, and we all just went, yeah, fine.
I'll, I'll check with the town clerk.
No, no, full council here, David Means.
Oh.
Yeah, not, not.
Yeah, of course it has to go to the chief in truth.
Okay, here you are.
Okay, the date of the next meeting is eleven September.
Twin tails. Emily, I might be.
Hopefully I might get a leave holiday.
I'm not going to be, I'll, I'll be in Liverpool.
So.
Be daughters, eh?
One, two, three, four.